It's actually no meeting today, April Fools. I brought you all here. All right. Well, the time is 6:01 PM and I'm calling to order a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Sunset Valley, Texas for Tuesday, April 1st, 2025. And before we begin the council, I just want to congratulate our new council members with their new tattoos. It looks like they're sporting. I haven't washed off yet. I understand that was a very fun event. Sorry, our family missed it, but it sounded like a lot of people enjoyed it as well. But with that, we're going to go straight into public comments. So at this time, if you want to address the council, please step up to the podium to state your name and then you have four minutes to speak. I think you may have to turn the microphone on. It may have.
Green. My name is Ome. My name is Ross Ponder and I reside at 1030 Sunflower Trail with my wife Sarah who's here. Three kids and three dogs. You probably see some. We are here tonight to make up on just some confusing procedure we're having with the permitting and approval process for doing a home addition, putting in a pool and like a little pool house so that they have a place to use the toilet. Anyways, I've got some materials I'm going to pass out, but I'm going to let Sarah here have the rest of my time.
Hello. Ms. Sarah? Is this work still working? This is a weird, weird situation. I hate microphones. I'm sorry. Many, many years ago, but it's been a while.
Sarah, just a second because we're getting some interference. We're going to bring another mic up so that you can be heard clearly.
Okay. How's that? Better? Okay. Like Ross said, we have three kids and currently now three dogs. We had four dogs. They're all German Shepherds. We live at 1030 Sunflower Trail and we're lucky to have Mayor Brunner who's our across the street neighbor. And we know many of you. I don't think I've ever met you, David, but hello. Karen, I think we were on a committee back in the day together. And Rudy, I've seen you around. Same with Rob. So I have a few things to say. I have a letter I would like to read, but I want to preface all this, you know, let's just orient ourselves to Sunset Valley. It's one square mile and we have a lot of weird stuff here, which is totally fine. I love all the weird stuff here. And I'm prefacing that by saying that what we are attempting to build is not weird, or at least it doesn't, it's not out of character in our neighborhood and it's definitely not unreasonable. It is essentially, so our house is 3,500 square feet and we bought it in 2018 and frankly, I thought it was way too big. We only had one kid then, now we have three and it was the only house that we could afford within 15 minutes of my former job. And the reason it's too big is that the layout is really kind of dumb to put it nicely. And the way that we're trying to fix that is that one of the things that makes the layout really challenging is that basically the entire house is upstairs except for a kind of a small living room and our bedroom. And there's a half bathroom downstairs. So if we build a pool, we would like there to be a toilet outside by the pool because we have three kids that are seven, five, and four as of yesterday. And we have, we often have lots of their friends and others over during the day. So we want to be able to do that. We have absolutely no intention and trust me, I hate the idea of running an Airbnb on my house. So no, I have no intention of doing that and you can hold me to that should you wish to in the future. But I do run a small business. I meet, I'm a financial planner and so I meet usually virtually with my clients, but I also meet with them in person sometimes. And I would like to be able to do that at my house because I don't want to have to rent commercial real estate that I really only need about five hours a week. And when I meet with clients, it's just usually a single person or a couple. My staff is Ross and three other people. So we meet about once a week as a group. So the space essentially just needs to be able to function as a office slash meeting space and bathroom. We have also been trying to build a extension to the back of our house, basically for the dogs. We are colloquially calling it a mudroom. I have found out that calling it a mudroom gets me in all kinds of trouble. So it's not a mudroom, it's a kitchen extension. That does not get me in as much trouble, apparently. It's basically just two walls and a door. There's not really a whole lot to it. That said, what has been extraordinarily frustrating is, you know, I'm a person that is quite hardworking. This is my first time as a business owner, but I've worked in large organizations and small organizations. And I'll be honest, I find it very disheartening when I show up at city, the city offices, you know, between four and five times over the course of two months during normal business hours, you know, nine, nine thirty, maybe three thirty-four. And I'm told that our, you know, full-time, well-paid staff members are not on site. This is a pretty small city and I'm essentially being told that they're not even in the city. Now, I have no issue with working from home. I work from home. I have my staff work from home, but the impression that I got from the person who I spoke to at the front every time, you know, she's a young person and she made it sound like, you know, these folks just aren't coming into work on a regular basis. So I don't know how much truth there is to that, but I do know that we attempted to start this process many, many, many times. We attempted to start it. My husband sent three separate emails through the sunsetvalley.org website to the Development Services Manager, which have never been replied to. I personally left two voicemails. I know Ross left at least one or two voicemails for that same staff member. We were told by Public Works Director that the staff member who was in charge of Development Services would get back to us on this, that, or the other multiple times over the course of the fall and the winter, and that never happened. In fact, the only substantive interaction that we've had with that staff member, the public, I'm sorry, the Development Services Manager, is in a meeting where he was ill-prepared and then a few days later him signing a stop order that threatened us with a $2,000 per day fine and prosecution, to which I then asked the city administrator if something similar has ever been issued to any other resident doing essentially normal stuff. That all happened after we had both been told via email and in person in a meeting that the project that we were currently working on would be administratively approved. That all happened after we had submitted documents for permitting. So it's pretty, pretty challenging. It also happened after we found out that our file was missing. We keep being asked to do additional things, many of which we have documented are impossible to provide because our file is missing. So in sum, the only thing I really want really soon is the ability to start our pool because we've been trying to for a very long time and time is money. The second thing I really, really want, and that's a longer project, is to streamline the permitting process to something that would make sense to normal people. I fully support always safe construction, licensing, insurance, inspections, giving us certificates of occupancy when things are kosher, but we shouldn't be asked, we shouldn't be given a 16-point checklist that I've never seen before published anywhere. And then I shouldn't be asked over and over again for
And council, one thing that I will be looking at with staff and potentially bringing back as a discussion item and then in the future we might be taking further action on is we do have some need to reexamine the portion of the code that deal with the PUD development specifically. There are some, I think, things that are complicated by the fact that that is a PUD and that's the only one that we have in our city and the way that the developer had allocated or presented information about, about the various distribution of impervious cover. It's certainly something that, you know, I think we've had this a couple of different times with other Villas residents, but that's something that obviously I wanted to make sure that we're doing in a thoughtful and thorough way and that we also are coordinating that with, with the land development code rewrite that we're going to be anticipating doing over the next few years or couple of years because we know there are other parts of the code that obviously need attention as well. But that's just as a heads up, that'll be something I'll be discussing with staff as potentially bringing back to council in a future meeting for a discussion item. Councilmember Rosengard.
I know that we worked on it and I, I understand that when it's citizen comments, we cannot respond to the citizen comments, but I know that we worked on the permitting procedure and I know when Sylvia was here, we had the whole thing. It was like the resident comes, talks to the person in permitting, if they have all their documents.
Again, councilmember, we're not supposed to be having a discussion at this time. We can, you can ask it during staff reports. I was going to talk about the permitting process during staff reports.
You got it.
Anybody else want to speak at this time for public comments? Okay, we're going to move on to staff reports, speaking of which, and we'll begin with the administration report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good evening, everyone. I'm very happy to announce, let me pull up the staff reports, that we finally have a launch date for GovBuild. The administrative staff, the Development Services Manager, other staff will be working a lot over the next few weeks to meet that launch date. We have some additional information we need to provide the company, some processes that we need to, and workflows we need to work through. And then we need to be out of the system basically by May 1st so they can finalize all of the testing and we'll be ready for our go-live date on May 15th. So hopefully we're able to stick with that date. And to follow up, yes, so as a part of this permitting and licensing software, we're trying to automate as much as possible, but yes, under the previous administration, there were some changes that happened to the legislature that required us to amend our code in regards to, many of you have probably heard of the shot clock, things of that nature, but yes. So when, we did make some code amendments about when an application is submitted. Staff has 72 hours to, you know, to say if it's administratively complete or not. That applies to a variety of permits, building permits, zoning amendments, variance requests, things of that nature. So all of these, you know, all of our code, those requirements are going to be built into the system. The MyPermitNow software, as I say, you get what you paid for and it's very, it's very inexpensive, but it was not built out properly and so it's just, it was not functioning the way it needed to, which is why you all approved the GovBuild. And it has been a lengthy process, but we're excited to get that done. So any, any other questions related to permitting, councilmembers?
Yes. Councilmember Johnson.
I, I think Rudy was asking specifically about like the change in the flow. Is that all just going to be built into, remember she, Sylvia had made that kind of like flow chart where it's just like, this is the weird order that we have things in that we've had forever.
That is going to be more addressed in the land development code rewrite.
Okay.
So we, we passed what we had to pass in order to meet the state requirements and as far as like, you know, administrative checks and things of that nature, but the, in the order of the development, like the grand order of development, like plating and pervious cover and watershed and all of that, those are issues that we need to address with the land development code rewrite. And, you know, Sylvia would talk about that frequently, so.
So, and there are, I thought the shot clock was a different, so there's a, there's a new shot clock that is 72 hours?
No, that is, that is not, that is not the shot clock I'm referring to. That is just, the 72 hours is to confirm if an application is administratively, administratively complete.
Okay, there was an--
Then you have an additional, you have time to, the shot clock is about how much time you have to review that application before, you know, it's either automatically approved--
Exactly.
Or you, you have to say it's either denied--
Right.
Certain--
Okay, thank you.
On that, what we were talking about, the permitting procedures and so on, what's it called? Because I've been trying to research it and find it and I can't find it.
That flow chart? I will have to dig through the previous city administrators' files. I can look for that for you.
Might it be called like permitting flow chart or?
I can look. I, I know the meetings are, I'm pretty sure I remember the, the time period we were discussing that so I can go back and look in previous agendas.
Okay.
But yes, that, that will all be, those are all items we'll need to discuss as part of the land development code process, rewrite process, which we are, you know, that has been on hold until we fully have GovBuild launched and off, off the ground, so.
Sorry, is it, so the, that newer 72-hour one?
That's, well, that was--
What, yeah, I, I don't know if I would have even known about it, but like, when did that go into effect? Is it, is it, you have a grace period before?
Twenty, 22.
Twenty, 22?
We, we adopted it in our code.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Okay, I'm going to move on to the report. So another piece of good news, we finally completed the interlocal agreement with the City of Austin for the Brody Waterline. I want to thank Jerry for his help with this process and with his connections with City of Austin. Carolyn and Jerry are finalizing the last few things so that we can begin construction. We're hopeful that construction can begin next week. Texas Gas Service is finishing the construction of the gas line and then it's kind of a race because we need to finish the significant portion, or at least the portion of work for the waterline in the Austin right-of-way by May 31st because then Austin Energy is going to be coming in. So I know the, the development down there at Leona is very eager to have, have water to the site so they can finish, finish construction and finish the project. Kyle was able to reach out to the auditors and the final field work is scheduled for the first week of June. We're going to make sure we have everything ready to go on our end. That, that data that we've had to rebuild, Kyle and the finance staff have been working on that, so everything should be good to go. Just some upcoming events, so there's going to be a AVI and Neighbors presentation here, is it at City Hall, right here in the council chambers tomorrow evening. Information is on the website. The annual spring fling is this Sunday at Doc's Backyard, I believe at 3:00 PM, but that's on the website as well. And then at the end of the month, the last Saturday of the month is Art Fest, Saturday, April 26th, 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. The committee report, so there's an agenda item later to amend Chapter 31, kind of striking the quarterly reporting requirements, but we wanted to incorporate committee reports as part of staff reports, so relevant committee reports have been included. For example, the Arts Commission and CED reports are attached to the administration report. And I did want to give an update, so we've been kind of floating some of the changes we've talked about. I went and Carolyn and I presented to the PNE Committee and there was some interesting discussion. I think they have more to, more to discuss about the potential change to parks and environment. CED had a really good discussion and I think we were able to come to a, an understanding that they were fine with getting rid of the economic development, but I think there is still a need from some of those members on the committee and some other residents I've talked to about making sure that the community development aspect is, is not lost with this transition. And so will the committee, myself, Carolyn, and Caitlin will be working on a transition to, we're kind of calling it a community engagement working group or a team, basically a group that's made up of, it can be representatives of the Arts Commission, PNE Committee, and other interested residents that get together as needed to help plan events, something I think Councilmember Medicas has been advocating for, where you, you know, get together, all the stakeholders are in the room and kind of look at the calendar of events. What's tended to happen lately is all the events are in the spring because the committees get seated in October and then they spend the first three months planning, so then you have all the events in spring. And so Caitlin was saying, if we, if we plan ahead, we can hopefully spread the events out throughout the year and it's less of a burden on, on staff and the, and the volunteers as well. So we'll be coming back to you, council, with, with recommendations, but it's looking like it will not be a traditional committee with the traditional committee structure, but it will have some parameters, you know, and, and guidelines to follow. So more information to come. Some upcoming topics, next meeting, April 15th, will be the Upland Schematic Design Presentation and we'll really try to publicize that so that interested residents can come and participate in that discussion. And then the following meeting on May 6th will have a preliminary fiscal year 26 budget presentation. This will be pretty much just the operating budget prepared for, prepared for you all by myself, Kyle, and the department heads. Another topic that, or another agenda item that I'm excited to bring is that the last meeting on, last week, last Thursday, the Budget and Finance Committee worked on the financial policy that you all directed them to, the, the General Fund Reserve, and I think we have a good policy with some good guidelines and recommendations, so we'll bring, be bringing that for you all as well. And that was a long report. Sorry about that. And if you have any questions.
Councilmember Rosengard.
Yes, on February 4th, March 4th, and of course, tonight, GovBuild permitting and licensing software built out underway. That was reported in staff reports each time.
Yes.
And now it added that we're hoping to have launch date on May 15th. How is that going? And if we started way back in January, I believe, because it was then February that you reported that you were underway, why, I'm assuming, and I don't know anything about software, that when you get new software, all you have to do is integrate it with the existing information and then you have to learn how to use the new software, but how long should it take to?
Councilmember, if I could address that real quickly. So the issue is that the, the software is not something that is, is either off the shelf that you just basically take it home and turn it on, nor is it custom-built for us. Rather than the, it has, and I'm not making this up, probably several thousand switches, if you will, different settings that we can turn on or turn off and stuff that we have to customize, like the email that goes out to the applicant, you know, it has to say, you know, the City of Sunset Valley received your, you know, your application, et cetera. So we've been doing a lot of customization of the existing off-the-shelf program so that it matches our needs and our permitting, to say the least, is somewhat simplistic. And so we've, we've had some issues with kind of basically backfilling the program to address the way that we do things here. And so it's just been a lot of work, you know, we meet with them every week, sometimes several times a week. Yesterday, I had dinner with the founder of the company to discuss our situation. And so we're working on it. Has it taken longer? Yes, I think a part of that's certainly on our side at the beginning, you know, it was kind of a project that once we got the contract awarded, we kind of moved on to a couple of other things for a little while, so I think some of that's on us. But certainly since January, I would say we've been working pretty, you know, on a weekly basis, I'm trying to, trying to get it done and we're getting really, really close. We're doing three types of permits to begin with, the water supply development permit, the zoning permit, and the, the building permit.
Thank you.
And then later we'll be adding more, but we'll do that ourselves because we'll know how to customize the program.
I just want to say, just like my washing machine has, what, 50 different controls on it? I use the same one every time--
Mm-hmm.
Because all the others is just useless.
Yeah, this is similar, but there's just page after page of settings, which is great. That means it's a very robust program that we can use to do a lot of good things, but it also means that there's a lot of individual settings that you have to make a decision. Do you guys want to use this or not? And if so, you know, what do you want it to do? And there's just 100 data points like that that we have to make that decision.
When you're ready to launch, could you do a presentation to council?
Yes, yes, of course.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, we plan at the, we want to make sure it's working, so probably the June, I think it's the June 3rd meeting, we'll, we'll do it, we'll do a demo. And we'll be sending out, we also plan for the newsletter in June to really like promote it and try to educate residents on it as well.
And I have some GovBuild sunglasses for all of you.
There we go. Glad.
Councilmember Johnson. As a, as someone who has submitted via MyPermitNow, I appreciate the time because that thing, we ended up just like emailing you, like very--
It's just, it's basically serving as a Dropbox, you know, the other program where basically you submit the plans and that's about it.
Yeah.
And so this is going to be a lot more. This is going to automatically send it to the building plan reviewer, it's going to automatically let you know that we received it, it's going to automatically let me know that it came in. All three of those things don't happen right now.
Yeah.
They all require phone calls and emails and so just that is going to be, you know, I mean, it's a very simple thing, but just that will be a victory.
Are there going to be historical permits in there?
Yes, yes, we've asked them, we've given them all the data from MyPermitNow and so they've gone back to 2022.
Wow.
And it's not going to be perfect because it's delimited data, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So it doesn't exactly match, you know what I mean? We're going from one program to another program, but the raw data should be there. It just won't be probably as--
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Any other questions before we move on to the financial information, sales, sales data?
Yeah, we had a, we had another good month, so that's encouraging. You know, our shopping centers, as you can see on the occupancy report, are, are doing well. There's still those vacancies in the homestead, but overall, you know, we are doing 8% better than we were year-to-date last year and we're almost 13% over the budgeted revenues, sales tax revenues, so.
And last, last month, our December, that was, we considered that an anomaly because there was like a, a one-time cleanup, but did any of that happen this month as far as we know?
No, it was much, the, the numbers were much more standard. I mean, we still had, as you can see, it's still the best, best March ever or best January ever, but yeah, we did not see the extremely high audit collections. The Budget and Finance Committee had some questions and Kyle and I are going to try to, try to see if they'll, they'll answer and give us some more insight into why that was so large for that one specific month, but yeah.
Okay. Yes, sir. I had mentioned, it's not in your update, but it's kind of like your, your bucket. I, and I, I called, called you to like talk about it, the, the gas thing?
I don't.
Because I don't know if anyone else looks at their gas bill.
Yeah.
We, I usually don't, but we looked at it and it's like, like off the charts.
And they've been sending, you know, my house, I've been getting rate notices, so it is on my list and I apologize, councilmember, I have not researched that yet.
Which is, which is fine. I just, I just hope that isn't just as a city we, okay, so can--
Well, we, we--
Say what we did.
We participated, and Darren, the Thomas Pracato Law Firm, so we participated, the city approved a resolution with a, a lot of other cities basically protesting the, the rate hike and then I know there was an additional action that we took like as a follow-up, but then as the council member was asking me, you know, what happened with that? So I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to research that because I really haven't received any further notification from, well, they sent something recently, but it was almost like it was about the next.
Yeah, our, our, our bill has gone up like 50%. It was like 50% higher for a month that we didn't, for like a milder kind of winter. And so I'm just hoping the, the court decided, or whoever, not court, but like the, whoever it is that decides, will decide whatever. I just hope we didn't miss our chance to kind of, you know, fight, fight the good fight there.
I will, I will hopefully have some, I will definitely have information for you for our next council meeting.
And yes, thank you for putting the committee reports. I, this, I think this format is a good, good start. Obviously, we had a lot of backlog this, this current report, so going forward, it'll just be capturing the, the most recent meetings, if there is one, but I, I do appreciate having this format and, and carrying it as part of a staff report, assuming that the ordinance change passes tonight. That would be the format we go forward with. Right, and we'll go on to public works.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm going to first kind of talk about some of the recent events we've had. Thank you to everybody who came out for the Holy Festival. That was an awesome event and thanks to Mother Nature, it rained that night and everything got washed away. It was, it was pretty, pretty nice. And also this past Sunday, so that was two Sundays ago, this last Sunday, we had a foraging class that was-- was two Sundays ago, this last Sunday, we had a foraging class that was a lot of fun and really awesome, so we will probably have some of those in the future as things change throughout the year out there, so you should be able to see those. We are, we have a bid opening for the Brody Mill Lane Mill and Overlay Project on April 16th. We'll probably be coming back to council then, that first May meeting with that item for, to do the mill and overlay along Brody Lane, and just to get that area cleaned up. We've been moving along with a lot of projects, and I think some of them are detailed in the bottom of the report. We will be, in the next week or so, hopefully, we'll be fencing off the city back hall, city hall backyard area to move on to the next phase of that project. We're also obviously going to be fencing off the area for Adventure Build and mowing the area for that, for Art Fest at the end of the month, so those projects are happening. In March, we were able to go out and one of the projects we had to do was to replace the edging that was on the playground over by the Homestead Recreational Venue. There were some plastic edging that was kind of deteriorating and falling over, and that's what holds together the safety surfacing for the playground equipment. And so we were able to basically create a series of kind of steps to go up to it using the curb machine that we'll be discussing a little bit later tonight. And we were able to do that repair, actually, we were able to do all that work in about two weeks in and out of there. So thanks to all the guys who are working on that and making that happen, it turned out really nice. We do have a few more repairs that we're doing to that playground area. We've got a slide that's being replaced, and we're going to add in a spinner from the other two spinners that have been removed and kind of broken off over the time. We also received the quote for making the street signs double-sided on the signs that are parallel to the street, so to the direction of travel. The cost for those are going to be $5,947 if we're going to put those out, and it will put an additional sign on the back of the poles, basically, so that the pole is sandwiched between the two signs. So, and I hope everybody comes out for the avian class tomorrow. And also, we have had quite a few people attending the Wednesday walks, so if you want to go on a nice walk for us, with us, nine o'clock tomorrow, we'll be taking a nice little hike tomorrow. Last couple wanted to have been about three miles, I think we may be doing just a mile and a half tomorrow. So we hope to see you there. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer those questions.
I have a couple of questions before we get to council. So one is, so we, this came back, council, because there was a discussion at the time when we installed the street signs, and, you know, some of the residents, you know, gave feedback saying it'd be nice if we had the double-sided signs like we, like normal street signs are. Now, with the obvious understanding that because we have these square poles, there's, it's going to look a little bit different than a regular street sign where you can have it directly backing up against it or close to it. But I would ask council feedback if we want to bring this back as a potential budget amendment, but we can get to your feedback in a second. But this, they kind of give you a diagram of what it looked like, or if we don't, if we move forward, what you else you would need in order to help make that decision as far as presentation, information from the vendor, yeah?
We've asked, I don't know if FSG is able to provide it, but I want you all to be able to see what it's going to look like three-dimensionally, because it's not going to look like a normal street sign, which, which the poles are thin, and the signs are, you know, basically fastened together. This is, I think it's going to look not very aesthetically pleasing with the double signs on the square post. So hopefully, FSG can give us a rendering. But also, we should not need a budget amendment, correct, for this? What would we need?
It would be coming out of the street fund, so we would just look at what we, the other projects that are happening. Likely, we would be coming back already with a budget amendment for the Brody Mill and Overlay Project, because that's all street fund.
Street fund, yeah.
It would probably be just part of that if we come back.
Okay. And welcome, councils, to be back on this. The other question I had is that the Ernest Robles Way project, great to see that it's now moved on to the other side.
It's an April Fool's joke.
It's obviously gone on quite a long time.
Yes.
You know, some of that was weather delays, some of that, it just seemed the additional, it took additional time or unplanned time. There has been some residents' feedback saying, you know, why can't we make it a two- or bidirectional while the construction's going on? I understand, you know, the cost and the, you know, the challenge with that, but I thought it'd be useful for staff to explain that, so that residents who are listening to this or may have questions can understand the context. I do want us to make sure that we're moving along as fast as possible, because obviously, businesses are probably affected by this.
Right.
You know, it's nice that we are now at the other side, and we can, you know, hopefully see those improvements, which I'm excited about. I love the idea that the speed bumps are going to mitigate some of the traffic.
It works, I saw it.
Yeah, and because that's always just been a pet, you know, pet peeve and a dangerous, but you know, pet peeve, you know, have to cross that intersection. But if you could just address in terms of, you know, the next steps of the project, but also, you know, why we couldn't do a bidirectional, or why it would be difficult to do that?
Sure. So we, prior to the, you know, start of the project, we went to the Public Works Committee, and we really considered a lot of different options for traffic control and how to get around and do the work. So there, there's the idea of doing bidirectional, there was the idea of closing one lane at a time on each, each side, and the bottom line came down to first, safety. The detours are actually a safer route, it may take a little longer, but it is actually a safer way for people to get around, as long as they, of course, pay attention and do not drive where they're not supposed to, where there's obviously road closed signs. So safety is a major factor in that. The other was that it would extend the length of the project and the cost for a lot of those other options. And so the Public Works Committee had reviewed all of that, and their recommendation was what we have gone with on this. So it is, like I said, number one was safety, number two was the cost effectiveness. I do realize, yeah, there was a lot, on this side in particular, there was, you know, there's obviously rain delays and things like that, but there's also, there was a lot of utilities on this side that had to be adjusted, and we had to go around just to make, make sure that we were, you know, and not utilities that generally show up, like, it's not like, you know, a water line or, you know, stuff like that. It was a lot of electrical and irrigation and things like that that were underground that we had to adjust for. We're hoping that on this other side of the road, that there's going to be less, there's less utilities on that side of the road. So we are hoping that it goes any faster, and I don't know if Dakota has anything he wants to add on some of that.
Thank you for the update. Let's go, Councilor Rosengarten, and then Councilor Johnson.
Back to the signs. We drove around the city looking at all the different signs, and thanks for correcting the one at Reese and Sunset. So trying to envision front to back, there's a couple of things that can happen. Usually, salespeople, when they're trying to show somebody a product, they will bring a demo product, so they could have a piece of the square post with a sign on each side, so we could see how it does look. I don't think it'll look bad. I also looked at Austin signs, and there are times that the signs are double-faced, and there are times that they are back-to-back on a circular pole, and then they just, it looks like they, what do you call those things? Zip tie. It looks like a zip tie holding the corners together. Mind you, they're not as far apart as they will be with a square post. And other times, they didn't bother, and you could see the space in between them. I realize this is going to be more, but I still don't think it's going to look bad. It will, in my opinion, and evidently some residents, because they brought it to me, make everybody feel like they can find the streets quicker and easier. And we can ask the chief to weigh in on his opinion on having double-sided signs.
Yeah, I would think you would need double-sided signs, whether it looked, I mean, it's not going to look terrible, but it's kind of odd to not have a, to have a street sign and look at the back of it, so...
Yeah. Also, at Ernest Robles and Brody, there is no new branded sign at all. It's still the old sign.
You're correct. I saw that, and I know that that's one, is not one, and so we are going to be reaching out to, because that's kind of a weird sign anyhow, because it's not, we did one in Oakdale because it's one of the residential streets, we didn't do that one there, because there's traffic lights. And so I'm going to be reaching out to Austin Traffic and see if we can actually transfer the branding to the signs on the traffic signs versus installing a corner, a street corner sign. Because, and when you're at one of those intersections, people are really looking at those traffic signs.
Where they're parked.
Yeah. So, so we are going to be reaching out to Austin Traffic and seeing if we can, we can provide signs that would go on to those, that'll be like an actual branded sign on the street, street traffic lights.
And like what you show right there on Jones and Ernest Robles, you have the Ernest Robles at the top right, you have the Jones at the bottom right, and then over at the top left is Jones only. So you only have Ernest Robles by itself and Jones by itself on those signs.
Councilor Johnson?
Thank you. The, the curbs, or whatever you did over there at the playground, so we did that work, and we didn't get paid for it, which is fine, but that's correct, right? So we don't own that property, and I don't know what the original plan was. That is on like the shopping center's property, and then I don't remember...
It's a city park. That's a city park.
That is private property, yeah.
The, the, the city has like a 100-year lease for that property.
Okay.
And so the city leases the property for the playground.
Okay.
I think it's, I don't know, like a buck a year, I think we paid it all in advance.
Yeah. The thing is, like, I fully support that. If you've ever seen docks on like a Friday, like, it, it will return of investment.
Yes.
Crazy, but I always thought that was in Sunset Valley, but it's not really, it's like this weird...
Yeah, it's, it's a lease that the, the city has for that property. And we also have received the easements to complete the trail, it's a Savannah Trail up to docks. We received those last week as well, so...
It does, it is kind of funny, because it's like right there.
It descends.
Towards that, now that we're moving to the other side, can we just fence off the staging area and open up Upper Cougar Creek?
Um, we're, we can meet with Smith and see what we can do about that staging area, because really, the staging area is the, one issue. That, and we have to have the safety railing in on, on the board, the little boardwalk kind of area, and we probably need to go ahead and pass our RAS inspection to open it up. So there, there are some options there. We, we don't plan to have a grand opening until everything's all done.
Yeah. And I, I'm like probably the only person who doesn't go on it, because I'm like, I'm not supposed to, but...
Well, we may be taking a preview hike tomorrow, if you'd like to join us.
Someone's got to work. Sorry. I think that was it, thank you.
Yeah, I'll say that, that trail is used every day now by people coming from docks or elsewhere. We use it too, so. What I did, what I hated though is that, at one, like, a couple weeks ago, there were some kids at docks, and they were taking shopping carts, and they were pushing them into the creek. Like, why? No, I don't even know where they're coming, you know, where they're getting the shopping carts, but it was, yeah. I'd maybe worried about, yeah, one more thing about, oh gosh, now we have to like, you know, we're about to clean up. So, any other questions for Public Works? All right, moving on to Public Safety.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I really only have one item, and it's parking, illegal parking on Pillow Road. I've received several complaints in the past couple of months about people parking on Pillow in the no parking zone, and it has been going on. I think I'll have to go ahead and follow my swag. We didn't get the information out to all of our new officers that, even though the signs are different, I think they thought that the Pillow is enforced the way it is on Reese during school hours. So that's all been corrected. I went back to try to find out if we've written any tickets or warnings, and we hadn't done it, and I know we've had complaints, and I've seen some of the vehicles that they're complaining about. So just to let the Pillow residents know that we know about the parking, and we now know to take enforcement action when people park there illegally. It's mostly like weekends, guests staying at the house on the corner, that kind of, for some reason, they park on the street even though there's quite a bit of driveway they can park in, but we will be watching out for it, and residents can expect to see tickets on cars now.
Councilor Rosengarten?
Yes. Now that we're fully staffed, we were able to do a lot of teamwork and put our different, let the officers get to know one another and trust one another. And this last month, we had a, we got both shifts out to this, like, escape room in downtown Austin. They had a group puzzle that they had to solve. One team was able to solve it, another one wasn't, but they all came back and really enjoyed getting to spend time together. In the past, the officers basically just came to work, that's the only time they saw each other. And you can, you can definitely see that we have a team now, much healthier environment than this kind of stuff. It's not just the team building. We've had about four trainings that we had other agencies come and host it at our police department, so we got free training for our people that we wouldn't, we didn't have to pay for. We're doing a lot more of that now, and it's, it just, I can see it in the place, and we talk about it. It's just a much better morale. So again, those openings really seem to have made the difference. I mean, we still have people calling, asking about employment with us now, and we don't have positions, and that, that wasn't happening before. So I really appreciate those extra positions.
Councilor Johnson?
Was it the, the one down near the convention center?
Yes.
Oh, okay, so, free plug, I love that place. It is, so I've done all of them, and I'm just like waiting for them to like bring one. Did you do Prison Break?
The spaceship, some kind of...
There's, there's one called Prison Break, which would have been a little bit more, and it's really fun, you're starting two adjacent prison cells.
They had trouble enough with the spaceship.
So is it a game, or is it a room you have to try and get out of?
It's, it's like a puzzle. Yeah, you need to get out, but, you know, you work from puzzle to puzzle to puzzle, and then eventually you get out, you have an hour to do it. But it is. And at Prison Break, again, like you start separated, and you have to like, talk to each other, like through the wall and stuff.
Sounds like a good council retreat.
We'll never get out.
Yeah, it's good to hear that we're, the staffing is, is fully staffed, and I'm glad that they got a chance to do team building. The parking did bring up a thought, because I imagine some of the parking was related to South, I thought, Southwest, and, you know, that, you know, obviously being a rental place. But I had a question for the city administrator, is, is that one of the houses that has registered as a Airbnb slash, or, you know, vacation rental? Because I know, I know it's an active one, I see it on VRBO, I see it on...
Yes. It's, it was, it was registered during the initial registration, but it needs to be...
Renewed.
It needs to be renewed, yes. So we've, again, with everything going on and trying to focus on GovBuild, we're trying to get that, and then we'll, we'll go for enforcement of the SDRs, yeah.
Yeah, and I think registration is one thing, but it's also one of these things that we're always, obviously, trying to make sure that the sales tax or the, you know, hotel occupancy taxes coming back for those properties.
And it's not, Airbnb is not submitting. So the state made recent changes, so it's another thing we have to follow up with Airbnb. So it's no longer, even though our code and our registration process puts the onus on the operator, Airbnb actually has a rule with the controller where the company Airbnb is supposed to, is, is to remit the taxes. They're not getting remitted to us, so that's another thing we need to, to follow up on. So we have several action items, but honestly, with everything else, that is on...
I, yeah, I know, it's...
We're trying to, we're trying to focus on some other, other issues, but it is on our to-do list. And we also hope to have the, the STR registration built into GovBuild, so that, that, that will also help things, because it'll send automatic reminders when, to both the staff and to the registrar, when it's, when it's expired, so...
Councilor Johnson?
This is kind of, it's more towards Public Works, but I guess it would be Public Works or Administration, but like, if you see, if there are violations of like dark sky, is that fully kind of like, or do we have to, if there's like super bright, I'm just going to say, that house has a like nuclear brightness light that shines out onto the street?
Right. So you would, I mean, you would, and again, that's really hard for staff, code enforcement to see, because we're not here at night. So you would, you would want to submit, we actually have a code enforcement email, right, Dakota? So you would want to use that email and report it, and then, you know, and then staff will, maybe we'll send PD to investigate.
They just, they just need like a calendar or something to go over, because it is like...
Yeah. They just probably need to be, you know, be aware of the code and what they need to do to rectify it, so, yeah.
All right, cool.
I have also received that complaint.
All right, any other questions for the staff reports before we move on to agenda items? Chip doesn't show up to a meeting and we just, we can't get going. All right. Uh, we'll move on to agenda item number four, which is council consideration of agenda items for approval on consent. Councilor Rosengard?
I move to approve on consent agenda item number five minutes of March fourth with corrections. And I forgot to type, uh, send you the corrections. It's the word possibly to possibility. Uh, and it's on, um, agenda nine, second paragraph. Discussion from council regarding the possibility delete possibly. Agenda item number six, agenda item number seven, agenda item number eight, number nine, and I have a question on ten.
All right. So the motion is to prove on that consent item number five, six, seven, eight, and nine. Does anybody want to pull one of those items?
The public comment had a, had a question about number eight, so I don't know if we just want to pull it and then talk about it and then, uh, the not, not, the, the one that was on engagement.
Let's pull it, um, and we can address that. Any others that we want to pull?
You didn't include ten on that, did you?
No.
Good.
You, you didn't include it in your motion. Right. All right. Is there a second for the motion to prove on consent item number five with corrections, six, seven, and number nine?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right. We approved on consent item number five with corrections, the approval of the minutes from the March fourth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting. Item number six, the approval of a temporary special use permit for carry the load to hold a walking event through the city on May twentieth, twenty twenty-five. And just as a note on that council, I think it just goes to the frontage road of seventy-one. There's not even any portion that goes into the residential area of the city. Item number seven, approval of an ordinance amending chapter thirty-one officials and organizations to remove the quarterly reporting and joint meeting requirements for advisory committees and the art commission. Item number nine, uh, authorizing the release of requests for qualifications for engineering services for the city. And with that, we'll go back to item number eight, which is consider an act on authorizing the release of a, of a request for qualifications and RFQ for legal services for the city. And Councilor Johnson, did you want to bring up the comments so that we could see if, um, there's any questions from council or just town?
Right. The, the only reason I pulled it is if on engagement HQ point eight from the, uh, from a comment earlier today was just, we wonder what the motivation is for item number eight on the city's agenda, request for qualifications for legal prosecutor, prosecutorial services in order to prosecute class C misdemeanors. Again, that's not me. That's just in the comments. I'll figure.
And I can just give you a quick summary, but you know, per our financial policies, we are, uh, we, we are releasing or renewing, reviewing contracts, um, for services every five years, I think, in this case. So the, the timing of the engineering and the, the legal services has come up. There, we're not, the RFQ for this case is for legal services to support what we call, you know, city business. There is also, um, going to be a separate RFQ issued for the prosecutorial, prosecutorial services, which is when we have court. We have to have a city prosecutor that represents the city and handles essentially classy misdemeanors. But I'll hand it over to, uh, to the city administrator for additional details.
Just, just a quick background on this item. So, um, this agenda item and the, and the change, or it really wasn't even a change of the RFQ. If you read the RFQ, because it, I essentially recycled the one that was from twenty twenty, didn't really mention in, in the scope of services, prosecutorial services were not in the scope of services. It was then implied, uh, when the Knight Law Firm was, was awarded, the, uh, when the Knight Law Firm five years ago was awarded the contract, um, I actually made a request of the city administrator and the mayor at the time, the former mayor, former city administrator, and I said, hey, can we keep our current prosecutor? Who was with Scanlon Buckling Young because we have a really good working relationship and, you know, we've, you know, built up processes over, I was the court administrator at the time. We've built up processes over the, and then the, the mayor, the, the former mayor was like, nope. We, we want to end all services with Scanlon and go with the Knight. So prosecutorial services was added on, even though it really wasn't in the scope of services for the RFQ. Um, and talking with the municipal judge, we've been talking about this for a while now. We think it's just better to issue separate, requests for qualifications because they really are separate qualifications and separate skill sets. The Knight Law Firm is, is eligible to apply or to submit for both, right? So, um, yeah, that's really, that's really, uh, there, there, this RFQ that's, that was, that you're approving tonight to post is just about general legal services for the city and probably on the, the fifteenth. Unless you all don't approve and want me to combine it, I will, uh, we will bring back an RFQ that's specific to prosecutor services. So, so that, that they can be evaluated based on the separate qualifications.
Councilor Johnson.
I move we authorize the release of an RFQ for legal services for the city.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes. Uh, we'll move on to agenda item number ten, which is consider an act on approval of a change order number five for the combined twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five CIP project to add the road striping of Ernest Robles Way. And we'll hand it over to staff for an introduction to this item.
Um, yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. We have, um, change order number five for the combined project that we've been working on. Um, I detailed what the other previous change orders were, um, as well. So this change order primarily is having to do with the road striping. Um, we originally thought that we would be able to use our current contract with Alpha Paving, um, to do the striping, but that is not, they don't do the kind of striping we've done on Ernest Robles Way. So if you've been out there, um, and driven on Ernest Robles Way, um, because it is a concrete road, white stripes don't show up that great on it. So they have what's called contrast where you have black below it and then white on top so that it really pops and stands out and makes it more visible and it's safer for, for drivers. Um, so the majority of the change order was changing that in. There is a portion of it that is also for some RC, uh, reinforced concrete pipe. That is, um, that I believe it was not included in the plan and it was necessary for us to connect some, some, uh, storm sewer. And the final part is to redirect a, the service line that is at the end of Countrywide Lane around the turnaround. It's currently underneath the turnaround and so this would, um, redirect it so we don't ever have to dig it up in the road next time if anything goes wrong. And so, um, if there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer that.
Councilor Rosengard?
So the reason I pulled it from consent is because of Countrywide. When did we do the turnaround and when did we do, is it the water or wastewater we put underneath the road?
It's water we're talking about. And so there's an existing service line that's there. And this is so that in the future, we don't ever have to dig up the service right line underneath the.
Totally understand. But what I'm asking is, they didn't have water from the city of Sunset Valley at one time. And when we did the turnaround, we put water to the, to that address.
No, it was, it's existing service from the city of Austin that we're connecting to.
So it's, because I remember looking and being in Public Works meetings many times and we were talking about the turnaround. Talking about putting service underneath the road at that time. So it would not cost us more money in the future. So this is not that same line. This is a city line of Austin.
So this is the, the, so when you connect.
We're not tearing up the road again to undo something we did.
Right, we're not tearing up the road to do something we've already done. This is the, the existing service. So this is so that when you connect to a wastewater, I mean, a water line main, there is a portion of what we call a service line that goes from the main to the meter and then from the meter to the house.
Yes.
And so that's to connect those, that, so a portion of that service line, even though it goes to a private connection, is a city-owned prop, is a city-owned service line. And so that's to redirect that. So currently it's under the, it is, was previously there. It's how they got water all these years. And so we're just redirecting it around so we don't have to go back into it.
But are we going to do, mess up the road that we built?
No, this is so we don't have to do anything in the future to mess up the road.
And we're not going to mess up the road now?
We're not messing up the road now either.
Okay.
It goes around, it goes around it.
Okay. I move to approve agenda item number ten.
Is there a second for that motion?
I'll say it.
All right, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, motion passes. All right, um, the next items are for discussion and possible action. We'll begin with agenda item number eleven. Consider act on approval of a contract with Digi Security Systems for migrating the existing building access control system to the Avagillion or Avagilon UA seven platform in an amount not to exceed thirty thousand two hundred and seventy dollars.
And, um, thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm going to let Dakota present on this. He and Lieutenant Early have been working on this for quite a while now. I know this isn't, is a new item, uh, for you all to consider, but, um, there, there are funds in the IT repair and replacement fund. So just keep in mind that this will not require a, a budget amendment. So I'm going to hand it over to Dakota for presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, this item is to update our access control to a different software. Currently, we're using Lanell On Guard and it is outdated and it's not been as functional as it needs to be. Currently, we can't even get into the system to change access for employees or, um, in, any individuals that need access to the facilities, which can create a security threat to our campus by allowing someone that has been let go or somebody that we deem not necessary to have access somewhere has access to come inside. So this would update the system. It's, we're going to keep all the card readers that we currently have because those are functioning properly. This is just software and a couple like things on the server to make it function.
Councilor Rosengard?
Okay. So basically how this system works, you have a key card. You have to use the key card. It has to be programmed. The key card has to be programmed and you can assign it to a certain person. Okay? So Dakota has number six, six digits in a row times six. So you go up to the entry door, you put it right in front of the key card, it opens the door, you're in. When Dakota, uh, Dakota Summers, his last name, not you. And Dakota Summers no longer with the city, we simply uncode that key card, take out those six digits and it cannot be used again. So that employee, disgruntled employee cannot get into the building and cause harm to anybody else. Doesn't that work the same for city hall? That's how ours works.
Yeah, it, it works that way and currently it, we have trouble getting into the system that we currently have to change those credentials. So it's, like, I have access from my laptop to do it, but I can't get into it from a laptop. I have to go to PD, get on the computer that is specifically, this is installed on, to then change the access, if it lets me in. Sometimes it just doesn't let me in. And the, uh, current company that we're under contract with, they're kind of intermittent on responding and coming out here. They just try and walk you through it on the phone and it doesn't really help to do that because I'm not an IT person. I, I can do some things, but I can't do all of it.
I guess where I'm having a tough time with it is, is, um, we just built the, the police building. It's twenty nineteen. Same with adding on to the Public Works Building. So all this is new and here we are saying, let's get rid of that and let's get something else new. I.
It's, it's the software, it's the software that we're going to be changing. It'll be going from a server-based to a cloud-based so I can, whoever has the credentials can access it from their smartphone, change anybody's access. Right now, it's, it's, it's an outdated system that we had gotten from previous years. We're just, we keep reusing the same thing and using a different contractor to, to help fix it, but it's not really fixing the problem. It's just keeping the problem.
Let me see if I can, I can, if I'm getting what you're saying. The, the city hall had the first system. We used the same system city hall had on the new buildings, which was an outdated system.
Yes, that's from my understanding. That's what I've been told, that all the buildings kind of went to that system and we've just been reusing the same software without like upgrading it. So this is upgrading it and giving us a lot better accessibility to it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like to add, this, 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 this issue predates Dakota. I remember Lieutenant Andrew Chi explaining to me how difficult the system was. So this is not a, this is not a new problem. I don't know if, like many things on the facilities, we just went really cheap with, with this, because with this, with the software that was installed across the buildings. But this is a fix. I, I would also like to say I showed this, shared this proposal with Robert Echols at Univista and, you know, he looked through it and he said, yes, this is good. He understands. He said, other cities have had to do this. Um, and he, you know, he reviewed it because we just wanted to make sure that indeed it was, you know, there was no hidden, hidden costs. But this, this is the upgrade and there's not going to be annual software or there is going to be annual software costs, Dakota?
There's not annual software costs. It's just a one-time, pay for it and it's ours.
But could you not find another place other than Oklahoma?
They are a contractor that Motorola, which PD has a bunch of Motorola stuff. So eventually it will incorporate with all of PD's technology.
Councilor Johnson.
At one point, there was a, a computer that had like the card reader, but it also had irrigation software on it.
Yeah, that's, uh, it, it, it's no longer on the same computer, but we're still talking about the same softwares that are just now.
That's wild. Yeah, I think it's time. Okay.
So one question I had about this is that I know it's a one-time cost. If, will there still be support, obviously, you know, ongoing from this company when there are issues? And do we have any sense of like how that support model works? Do you have any other cities to compare it to? Because I, I worry that three years from now, we're going to call with a technical problem and we're obviously not on contract with them anymore, but we paid this, you know, this first time or one-time cost. What does that support model look like?
So from, we talked to Motorola extensively about this, telling them that our fears that that would happen. They said this is their best contractor that is in the area and is able to respond. The other thing that I want to tell you that happens too is sometimes some door will just automatically unlock and it'll be unlocked. And if you can't get into the system to lock it, there's no way to protect you from anybody on the outside. So those were things and I said, I want them to be able to respond within twelve hours of that happening to somebody to be on site to fix that problem. And they said that this company is able to do that.
Is it, does that happen when there's a storm or something?
No, I can't really narrow it down to exactly when it happens. It would just, it's just randomly like either the system reboots or it loses its connection to the internet and it just opens the door.
Wow.
Do we have any, I didn't see it in the proposal, but do we have like any kind of warranty, you know, or a, this is how long we can get that support for? And is it also include any potential software upgrades that, you know, might be present for like security issues or things like that? So that was information that I didn't see in their proposal at least, but I don't know if we have that in more detail.
I don't have, uh, warranty details on that. I can get those. Um, but as far as support goes, again, I, I, I believe it's, this company is around to stay around and we'll be able to reach out to them and they will be to assist us in up, getting upgrades for the system if need be.
Other questions, Councilor Rosengard?
Uh, a couple more things. Uh, I did read through all the additional costs. It says there's an additional cost if there's any new boards, if any existing access panels fail. So we're talking software only, but if all of a sudden the software, uh, is integrated, but then all of a sudden our panels go bad, then we got more expense. We also have, uh, troubleshooting of existing cabling, assuming all else is working. Mercury hardware, sheet rock repairs, painting, patching.
Yeah, all, all of the, if there is any sheet rock repairs, which there will not be any because we're not changing any of the readers.
As long as they work.
Yeah, as long, as long as they work. And most of those are already wired in. Alls you do is just take them off, put them back on, hook them up. Um, and as far as the, the electrical, like the paneling goes, there is a potential that they could not function properly. Only a select few that would not do that. Most of them are the newest and best panels, which we, that got updated. So it's the, it's like maybe one or two that potentially might not function with this.
Thank you.
Other questions from council? Councilor Metekis?
Um, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
To approve the contract with Digi Services System for migrating the existing building access control system to the, however you say that, Avag.
The UA seven platform.
UA seven platform in an amount not to exceed thirty thousand two hundred and seventy dollars.
All right, is there a second for that motion? All right, is there a second for that motion?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? And Dakota, if you could get more details on the warranty, just to forward them to me, I'd appreciate that. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, motion passes. Moving on to agenda number 12. Consider an act on the purchase of a curbing trailer from Borderline USA. I should say, used curbing trailer from Borderline USA in an amount not to exceed $28,000 in approval of an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget. And I imagine, oh.
I just want to give a brief intro to this item. I know, again, we're talking about a budget amendment here. Just as, and Dakota can provide more detail on the curb machine, but it's been a wonderful purchase. It is something we purchased in FY24 with some leftover equipment funds. I, I forgot exactly, but we had leftover funds and we purchased the curb, the curb machine, I think, without realizing how useful the curb trailer, and, and again, Dakota can, can speak to it. I did, in, in preparing this agenda item, you know, I asked him, you know, is this something we could wait and go through the normal new equipment process that Councilmember Rosengard is familiar with? We present it to the Budget and Finance Committee, they make a recommendation and then the mayor includes it in this budget. And I think Dakota at least presented me with very good reasons to why I think this warrants a, a budget amendment and to purchase the, the used trailer. So with that, I'm going to hand it off to Dakota to present.
Yeah, so the, the curbing trailer that we're currently using is the one that you guys have seen that says Curb University on it. They've graciously let us borrow that for the last several months, as they are out of North Dakota and they can't do curb in the wintertime. So we worked out a deal, since we host the training, they let us borrow this trailer. So we've been using it and it's just made doing, making the curbs a lot easier. All of the supplies are right there on the trailer, there's water and power and it's, it's super functional. And it's going to cut our labor time down significantly by purchasing this trailer.
And can you just summarize some of the projects that we would be using this on in the next couple of years? Because I know that that was part of the discussion too, is that this, we're, we're looking at curbing on several projects.
Right, so we have used it on City Hall Backyard Project, we just use it at docks. It's going to be continually used on the City Hall Backyard Project. And we can potentially use this for the Uplands Project and any other trail that we want, concrete curb and granite trail to go through. It's, it's very cheap to put this curb in this way. As, just for example, the, the curb that we put down on Jones Road to make that little granite trail sidewalk, that was three weeks worth of labor plus concrete materials to put that in. Whereas, you know, a couple of weeks, we did thousands of feet of curb.
Start with Counselor Johnson first, then Counselor Rosengard.
I, I recently read an article about like this software company and how it, it pays well, but one of the ways that they retain top talent is buy them the hardware that they want. They're excited about hardware and what, I have never seen you guys so excited as you have been about this piece of equipment. So it is like, absolutely, but once we have curbed the world, can we, we'll keep it around, but is this?
We can, we can, we can auction this off.
Or no, like keep it around, like rent it out to like other.
Yeah, I, I wish we could do that, but yeah, after it's, after we've reached its useful life for the city, do with like everything else we do and we auction it off and we'll recoup some of those funds. These are pretty sought-after trailers, so it's, we're lucky to even find the one that we found that's a used one for the price that we found it for. Because brand new, these are, you know, between $35,000 and $40,000.
Okay, so this is like the equivalent of the PD getting drones.
Yeah.
All right, cool.
They all got to have their toys.
Counselor Rosengard.
I was amazed on learning about gas-powered wheelbarrows. Man, I, I looked at the pitch, I was like, whoa, that's pretty cool. I have no problem with this and I understand that it, it makes the job go a lot easier. And we just want to make sure, as we say in Budget and Finance, now you have to think about repair and replacement. So we need to put money aside for repairs on this when budget time comes around. Other than that, I'd love to have some curbs around some of my landscaping beds.
Any other questions? Well, I guess it won't have Curb University printed on the side, but can we come up with a new slogan for it?
We can put our logo on it, so it'll, it'll be blank. And, and this.
They're a project for the Arts Commission to work on.
Blank, blank canvas. Yeah, so this, this current trailer will go back to North Dakota and we'll get the one that is actually in South Dakota and they'll get shipped down here. It doesn't have any logos on it, so we can put our Sunset Valley logo on it, whatever we want, blank canvas.
All right. Any other questions? Counselor Johnson.
I move we act on the purchase of a curb, curbing trailer from Borderline USA in an amount not to exceed $28,000 in approval of an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget. Budget, end of statement. In that case.
I think it's corrected in the backup, I apologize.
That's that extra.
I move we, this one's kind of like worded strangely. I move we act on the purchase of a curbing trailer and shipping from Borderline USA in an amount not to exceed $35,000 and approval of an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget.
Is there a second for that motion? All right, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. All right, our last agenda item for the evening is consider an act on approval of an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget. This would be budget amendment number six for repairs to the city facilities pond and re-irrigation system to comply with TCEQ. Oh my goodness. My whole career on council has been following the pond. Following the pond. But this should do it, I've been, I've been assured. So we'll hand it over to staff for introduction.
So this is, we, we've been working to finalize acceptance of the City Hall Pond and stuff with TCEQ as part of the Water Pollution Abatement Plan for this, the city facilities project. One of the things that we had to do is we did a rear, an extension of the re-irrigation field and we have to pass a final test. The original controller for the pond was the Toro product. It was the one that was on like a certain server and things like that, that we did. But Toro is no longer manufacturing or offering service for that style of controller. So we are looking to change the system to a Hunter system so that it can make the system functional. There's a typo in there, it said 12, we're asking for $10,000 to make that switch. We have to buy controllers and decoders and things like that. And we were going to use our licensed irrigator to assist with some of the switching and the programming. The, the additional funds will also allow us to also, because we have other ponds to maintain in the city, so we'll remain a little bit balanced in that line item, so that we have funds for the rest of the ponds for anything we need to do in the future. So it is a budget amendment from the venue funds to, the venue fund reserve basically into that water quality pond line item for $10,000. And I believe the city administrator may have sent out some updates to make the numbers, there is a typos on the numbers too, so.
Okay, so their budget amendment would be for $10,000?
The first quarter, we did a mayor's, a budget amendment that Mayor you could approve and that you signed and I signed and was reported to council and we did a slight adjustment, so, because we needed to fund some temporary labor. Anyway, so this is the actual amended amount. This, 15,000 was adopted, the amended budget, 14,329. So this, these are expenditures so far. We're adding 10,000, so basically we've got 11,500, which should be sufficient, right, correct, Carolyn, to, to finish out this, this work? And plus to have a little buffer, so.
And the system we're moving to, the Hunter system, it's also used in other components within the city? Okay, so there'd be commonality also gained by this instead of having two of those. Council questions? Counselor Rosengard?
I can't get the math to work. So you take the 14, 329, minus 12, 800, plus the 10,000. I can't get 11,000.
I did this. So 14, 329, 32, minus 12.
And now I got it.
11, 528, 51. Yeah, okay.
All the other times I couldn't get that number, now I got it.
And the, the, the budget amendment running list, just so we're keeping track, that one didn't, shouldn't change, because we are, the, the budget amendment amount didn't change. So just, this would, the two, if this one is approved, then two would be approved tonight and we're at 320,000. But the 35,000 is, it'll be a capital expense, but it's coming from, that is coming from the general fund balance. But as Public Works Director mentioned, this 10,000 is coming from the venue fund, the green tax fund.
Counselor Brown?
So this is the, this is the last thing to close out? This, it will be, it will be done after this test?
Five Hail Marys.
It's, it's a zombie pond, it's never.
It's the zombie pond, yes.
David, do you want to make a motion?
So if I, if I may, I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance amending the fiscal year 24, 24, 25 budget for repairs to the city facilities pond and re-irrigation system to comply with the TCEQ.
Motion is to approve, is there a second for the motion?
I'll second.
Counselor Johnson, second. Further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, motion passes. Council, that takes us to our last item, which is always.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second for that? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, we are adjourned at 7:24 PM.
David, now you have had to make a motion regarding that pond. Each one of us has had to deal with that pond. We should, got to share. I just, I can't believe we're still talking about that pond. We tried so hard to get Jasco to take care of it, make sure that everything was working right and it was negotiating on dollars and all this. Oh, goodness sakes.